Good evening, everybody. We'll call to order the April 20th meeting, 2022 meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. We have five members present, and I believe our other two members are online. Thank you. Let's see, draft minutes for the last couple of meetings will be available at a later date. Is there any correspondence or input?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to turn the mic over to Emily Morgan. Ms. Morgan has an update for the Commissioners on Daycare Two in the R4 U.S.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you. So I will start off by saying that next Wednesday is my last day with the city. Unfortunately, I've accepted another position that is a little closer to home because currently my commute is about an hour up to City Hall. So it's been great working with you all. I just wanted to let you know. But before I put in my notice, I had been working with Dawn on the daycare facilities, draft ordinance, and one of the steps that we have taken to kind of collect more information and get to know what the community is looking for is staff launched a survey. I'll go ahead and share my screen. So this was launched last, or excuse me, April 6th for the public, and I'll go ahead and just kind of run through it. Oh, maybe not. Oh, it's because it's closed. We closed it at 5:00 p.m. today. So next week, um, next week, Dawn will be discussing, potentially you'll get to meet Nathan Goldschmidt. He's our Associate Environmental Planner, really great, but he will be helping out with this project. So the intent behind the survey was to gather kind of input as to what concerns of the community were, you know, in regarding to traffic, noise, parking, things like that as far as allowing for these daycare twos within the R4 zoning. Currently, they do require a conditional use permit, which is kind of a lengthy process and intend to be just tedious. And because of that, people, developers, business owners, don't really want to go through it. So that is putting kind of the kibosh, if you can say, on implementing these new developments. So again, we're exploring the idea of allowing it outright. There would probably be some sort of development standards as far as, you know, how many parking spaces you have to allocate, things along that line, but just to make it easier because there is such a need. And for the most part, I would say, in a lot of the different polls, which I'll compile for you to review next week, it's about 70% of the population who have taken the survey. At the last I had checked, it was close to 60 people, which is actually way better than I was anticipating. They, they believe that there is a substantial need for more facilities in town, just because it is, um, you have people coming out from off the island to work and vice versa, so they're just in need for more of those facilities. That is all I have for tonight, and again, thank you. It's been great working with you all.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, and thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Um, so any new business? Are we proceeding to old business then? Okay, so we're, you have a staff report for the public hearing of the 2021 docket for the comprehensive plan?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Just need to, there we go. And I will just add that we and the Planning Department will greatly miss Emily. She's been a, a great person to have onboard. I'm going to put that up there. Um, so yes, this evening, we have the public hearing for the 2021 docket of Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulation Amendments. I will just give a brief recap of the annual amendment process. We had a couple of years, 2020 and, excuse me, 2019 and 2020 where we didn't have any annual amendment, we didn't do the annual amendment process, but we did have a couple of amendment requests that came in, and due to COVID and all of the complications that that brought about, um, we just, it was determined to combine all of those amendments that we'd received into the 2021 docket. And so the last day to submit a petition for inclusion on the 2021 docket was March 31st, 2021. The City Council reviewed all of those petitions and had a work session on May 24th, 2021, and then a public hearing on June 28th, 2021. A public hearing on the docketing of the proposals. And then at their July 12th, 2021 meeting, the council adopted Resolution 3042, which set the docket for, for our annual process. And then on March 23rd, the Planning Commission met, 2022 now, the Planning Commission met for a work session that was last month. And since then, staff have completed the environmental review for the docket of amendments and issued a SEPA determination of nonsignificance. We've published the proposed draft text amendments that were initiated by staff and also published the notice of public comment period and public hearing in all of the various places that were required to do so. And so this evening is the, the public hearing before the Planning Commission. Just to note that on our website, for those that are not aware, all of these documents are available on the Comprehensive Plan Amendments City website at the location or the address at the bottom of your screen. All of the applicant documents, the petitions, the SEPA checklist, the DNS, staff reports, the draft amendments, and public comments received, and also links to past meetings and documents, so you can bone up on the, the history of this process if you would like to do that. So I thought what we could do is go through just briefly each of the amendment requests and maybe pause after each one and see if there's any public comment, either in the audience or online, and, and work through the public hearing that way if, if the Commission thinks that would be beneficial.
Looks like it. Go ahead.
So there were three citizen-initiated amendments to the comprehensive plan that were docketed. Two were to the comp plan text, and one is a request to change the future land use map designation of a particular property. And then the city, city staff initiated one comprehensive plan text amendment and 10 development regulation amendments. So first, I'll just briefly go over the citizen-initiated proposals, and they involve short-term rentals policy language, the future land use map amendment proposed by Mr. Skillings, and a waste reduction goal and policy is added to the utilities element. So the first was a petition submitted by Evergreen Islands, and this is related to short-term rentals. The proposal was to add, or excuse me, amend goal H1.1, H dash one of the housing element to add two new policies. And goal H1 right now says Housing Supply and Variety Provide for Sufficient Quantity and Variety of Housing to Meet Community Needs. And the proposed policies to add to that are regulate short-term vacation rentals to mitigate their adverse impacts on the availability of affordable housing, and regulate short-term vacation rentals to mitigate their adverse impacts to residential neighborhoods, such as additional traffic, noise, and their quality of life. And on each of these, I'm just going to give a brief staff recommendation. So staff's recommendation, and you do have all of the, the staff review and analysis of each of the proposals in your packet, where staff went through and, and looked at the applicable comprehensive plan policies and how each of the proposals support, is supported by those policies or not. And so for this particular amendment, staff was, staff is recommending a little bit different language for the potential amendment, and that would be to adopt regulations for short-term rentals that balance the economic opportunity created by short-term rentals with the need to maintain sufficient supply of long-term housing stock to minimize adverse impacts to residential neighborhoods and that are equitable, clear, and easily enforceable. And the, the reason that staff was proposing to expand on these policies a little bit is because we have heard from other folks in the community, you know, that there, and we know that there are comprehensive plan policies that do support, you know, running home, home-based businesses and also expanding lodging opportunities in the city. So then there are also policies related to protecting the quality of life in residential neighborhoods and, and making sure that there is efficient housing supply. So this was an attempt to sort of bring all of that into a policy that could help guide the, the development of the changes to the regulations that will be upcoming. And with that, I'll be quiet and let the public speak.
So with that, we will open the hearing, and the first item for the hearing will be any comments related to P1, short-term rentals. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Tom Glade. I'm representing, representing Evergreen Islands this evening. And we initiated this comprehensive plan amendment based on an article in 2020 regarding Sedona's housing and their woes, which threaten its census communities, and some people blame vacation rentals. And so there's a quote from the article that we, that was initiating our concerns was that residents in Sedona are struggling to find long-term housing, and the city, after a state law prohibited the city from regulating short-term rentals. And Sedona had an estimated 200 to 300 vacation rentals before the new law took effect, which meant that, you know, vacation rentals were not regulated. And so today, the vacation rentals have grown to more than 1,000 homes, which is 20% of Sedona's total housing inventory. And so one of the problems is, is that wealthy investors from like Metropolis, like for Sedona, it's Phoenix, come in and they buy these income properties and, and they, you know, they make a lot of money off of them without a lot of effort. And so it's sort of a parallel between Anacortes and Seattle, that there are wealthy people in, in Seattle that would like to come up and buy income properties in Anacortes. So we urge the city to adopt, uh, short-term rental regulations because it's, it is a really Pandora's box to open up to allow vacation rentals. There's issues of party houses and tax collection and, and a myriad problems that the city will have to deal with in the coming time. So the City of Anacortes needs to develop really comprehensive regulations to control the rental houses here. So thanks for your time this evening.
Thank you. Bearing in mind that the written comments are still going to be received up through Friday, the 22nd, when we're done this evening, we'll continue the, the hearing to allow us to hear any last-minute comments at our next meeting. For people may have some comments in support of the written items that are submitted or further clarifications. We want to make sure we capture those before we start our discussions. Are there any other members of the public who have comments to make about this particular item?
Mr. Chair, no, there are not.
Thank you. We'll move on to number two.
So the second citizen-initiated amendment comes from Mr. Thomas Skillings, and he owns property down at the southeast corner of the intersection of V Avenue and 35th Street, which turns into Fidalgo Bay Road. And on the screen here, you can see SR20 coming into town right, right back here. So this is the, um, these are the subject properties. And Mr. Skillings would like to change the land, future land use designation from industrial to residential medium density of a portion of these two parcels. So I tried to kind of illustrate this, zooming back a little bit to kind of get the big picture of, of what's going on. So the, the property that we're talking about is, is right in here. This whole green area is all the industrial land use designation and industrial zoning. And so you can see right now, it's kind of got this bumpy boundary between, between the industrial and residential medium density and high density. And then Fidalgo Bay Road is right here. So the proposal is to change a por, just a portion of those two lots from industrial to residential medium density, and then a future rezone from industrial to R3. And the purpose of that is to enable the placement of, uh, outbuilding and accessory residential structure. The, the proponent would like to move the boundary line. He owns this property and this property and like to move the boundary line, but our code prohibits being able to move the boundary line where it would create a lot with two different zoning or land use designations. And so that's what kind of has triggered this, this request. So with the, if the change were approved, then that would result in the industrial boundary looking like something like this. So staff's provided analysis in your staff report in your packet, and staff was recommending that, actually, option B, which would be to adopt an amendment to the future land use map that would change the entirety of that, of those two parcels from industrial to residential medium density, and subsequently process a rezone to change the zoning from industrial to, to R3. And the rationale for that is that this is already a very small little piece of industrial land, and making it even smaller, I think, would, it'd be challenging to develop it with any sort of industrial use while providing for buffers from the surrounding residential areas, which are on three sides. So there are policies in the comprehensive plan that talk a lot about retaining industrial land to support those water-dependent uses in, in the industrial zone. But looking at this individual particular case, staff's recommendation is to, to change the entire parcel to residential.
Clarify that, and you're recommending running that red line all, all the way over to the residential high density? Or are you still leaving that, that notch in there of the industrial?
Yes, I'm sorry. I should have provided that example. Yeah, so staff's recommendation would be to just have the boundary of the industrial zone follow 35th Street and Fidalgo Bay Road. So this entire thing here would become residential medium density.
Ms. Graich, is, do you have any feedback from the, the requester about that?
Um, he may be on the line. I'm not sure if, do you see a Mr. Skillings on the line? No? Okay. We did transmit the recommendation to Mr. Skillings and did not receive any feedback as of, as of yet.
Okay. So we'll be looking for that. Should that be forthcoming?
Yes, thank you.
Hey, are there any other, any other things about this item that you want to cover?
Um, no, there's not.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this particular item? I see a head shake, and moving on.
We'll move on. Okay, so the third citizen-initiated amendment request is from Ryan Walters, and it is a proposal to add a new goal to the utilities element of the comprehensive plan. And that is a new goal that would increase recycling and composting to 65% of the municipal solid waste stream. And then the supporting policies would be policy U dash 9.1, provide weekly curbside food waste collection, including small containers for residents that don't require yard waste bins. Facilitate or require multifamily dwellings to offer food waste collection. Perform a waste characterization study and analyze results to identify waste stream components that can be targeted for reduction through producer responsibility or consumer education. Construct solid waste rate schedules to incentivize increased diversion or reduced frequency of pickup. And finally, when it becomes feasible, reduce garbage collection frequency to reduce trips, personnel costs, and greenhouse gas emissions. And so staff's recommendation on this proposal was to adopt the amendment as proposed. And that's all staff has to cover on this one, if there are any public comments?
Any public comments on this?
Mr. Chair, there are not.
Proceed on, then.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to the city, city-initiated proposals, and, and these are, um, there's nothing really earth-shattering in here. It's mostly just cleanup and items that have been identified by staff over the last couple of years that would help with clarifying items in the code and making things more, more straightforward for members of the public. And so that's really what all of these are, and we wanted to group them all together so we could look at them all at the same time as part of this.
We'll ask for comments af, at the end of your presentation, then.
Yeah, that, I think that would make sense on this one. Good, good, good call. Thank you. Okay, so the first, um, the first amendment request was to make some changes to the introduction section of the comprehensive plan where it lists all of the, it lists, I'm going to try and, this might get kind of tricky for me because I have the PDF version of the actual text that I wanted to pull up, but it doesn't, won't let me keep that toolbar So what I might end up doing is just using this document, if you all don't, don't mind. Okay, thank you. So this is, this was also, these are the, all the text amendments proposed that were provided as part of your packet. So the comprehensive plan intro, technical updates, basically were to kind of clean up this section, eliminating the names of plans that don't necessarily need to be incorporated by reference into the comprehensive plan, and also correcting some titles, taking out the dates so that we don't have to keep amending this section to keep current with the, those other plans as they're revised over time. And that's about it on that one. Any questions on that one? Nope. The, the next proposed amendment, C2, was to clarify vesting provisions. And the intent of, of these changes was to try to make it more clear to permit applicants at what point in the permitting process the, their project would be vested to a certain set of regulations. Right now, the city has a site plan review application, and, you know, you might need a conditional use permit for a project. There are multiple sort of land use permits that you might have to get along with a building permit. And so this was attempting to clarify that a site plan review application does not vest you to those regulations in place at the time when you do the site plan review. You would need to submit a building permit application at the same time as the site plan review application in order to be vested to the regulations that are in place at that time. And I think that there's probably some work, some more work that we could do on this section of code, based on some feedback that we've gotten. And so I, I think I'd like to take a look at this and, and bring back some potential revisions when we see you next time, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about this one at this point.
Questions from the Commission?
Okay. Thank you.
We'll look, we'll look for any changes you can highlight in, at the next meeting.
Thank you. The next change that we were looking at is in the same section down here regarding inactive applications. So right now, the way that the code reads, if an application is deemed incomplete, the applicant, the applicant has a certain number of days to provide that information that is needed to make the application complete. And I think it's 60 days. I guess I could look right here. 90 days. So if an applicant doesn't provide the requested information within 90 days, then the application's basically returned back to the applicant and they need to start over. And so another situation that arises is that an application might come in and staff deems it complete because it technically has all of the required, you know, reports and plans and everything that is needed to start the review of the project. But as it gets into the review, staff may discover that there are some additional, you know, important information or reports or changes that need to be made to the proposal before moving forward with additional processing. And so in those cases, what the code is missing is a certain length of time that an applicant needs to respond to those requests. And absent that, an application could just sit there for years, you know, having been deemed complete, and then come back, you know, at any moment after all of the codes have changed and, and still be vested. So in this particular instance, staff was looking to kind of provide a, a deadline for, if you have a complete application, but staff requests additional information, that needs to be provided in a timely manner. Moving on. C3 is related to concurrency review and monitoring program and application requirements. And this chapter 1922 concurrency review, these are just some additions that would be helpful for staff in letting applicants know what, what items are required to facilitate concurrency review. So sometimes there are instances where we would require an applicant to provide a, a certain capacity study or additional information that we would need to evaluate the project's impacts on our services and facilities. And so this is just giving, um, this is just stating that staff can request that information and the applicant needs to provide it. And then also making sure that any sort of third-party review required as part of the application is also covered by the applicant. Okay, moving on. Adult family home. This is a proposal to kind of clean up this definition so that it is consistent with the state law relating to licensing for adult family homes. There was a change that There was a change that allowed for provision of services up to eight adults instead of six when an adult family home meets certain requirements and it's approved by DSHS. And so the thought here is just to update that definition so it's consistent with what's allowed by the state law. This next one combines a few different amendments that are all related to the community design title of the development regulations, C5, C6, C7, and C8. And so I'll just go through and stop when I find one of the changes. Yeah, so this first one was kind of a request from the Public Works Department to take a look at where we talk about parking, or on-street parking in the code, to also include the term parking pockets instead of only parking lanes. And the purpose there was to just make it apparent that a parking pocket is also an option. You don't necessarily have to have a full eight-foot-wide, you know, pavement along the entire length of a street. And so that was just going through and, and updating where we have parking lanes, we added or pockets to kind of make that option more upfront, if you will. Apparent. Okay, and so that's in a couple of different places. You'll see here, quite a few places. So the next change was to our lane design standards. So this is a, a new street cross-section that was introduced when we updated the code in 2019. It provides for kind of a smaller roadway section that reduces impervious surface and provides an option for access to smaller lot, smaller developments accessing up to nine lots. And the, the change here is adding a note similar to the note that's under the local designs, local access, street type relating to providing guest parking. So this is the exact same note, just copied and pasted into this table to make it clear that anyone using this standard for their street as part of a proposed development needs to incorporate guest parking somehow. It could be on-street in parking pockets, off-street, on designated parking areas as part of the project, or some other method. And then kind of going along with that, the, this section here is adding some language that will provide authority for city staff to require installation of no parking signage. So when those smaller street standards are utilized in a development, anything less than 24 feet and there's not really sufficient space for a parked car and an emergency, you know, fire truck or an ambulance to get by simultaneously. So this allows us to be able to sign those areas, no parking, to make sure that there's going to be adequate access, emergency service access. And that was something that was identified as being missing in the current code. Okay, this next one is in chapter 1953, private driveways and access. And with this one, we made, we're looking at making some changes to clarify, so this section is related to determining where, for new development, where the driveway can access. So if there's, if a prop, if a lot has frontage on two streets, how do you determine which street the lot is required to access from? And so in this case, we had this standard that said where a property has frontage on more than one street, driveways and accesses are limited to the lowest volume street as determined by the Public Works Director. Felt like that wasn't quite clear enough, so we added some language here to specify that the driveways and vehicular accesses are limited to the street with the lowest vehicle traffic volume. So just kind of further clarifying what that, what that means. Okay, so alleys, this is, so we're still in the driveway location, so determining when a property that is developing is required to take alley access or, or not. It was a little bit vague as written before, and so we were kind of coming up, you know, during development re, a review of projects, you know, with applicants that wanted to access their site off of the street. And, you know, staff would say, well, there's an alley there, so you'll need to access from the alley. And we felt like the code language, you know, could be stronger to support, support a position one way or another. And so what, this is what we came up with. We did get some comments from Land and Gentry that we forwarded to you earlier today, and I'd like to take a look at those and, and might look at making some changes to this particular language as part of the information that comes back to you the next meeting. Are there any questions on this particular one? Okay. And then this, there's also a proposed addition about existing driveways that don't conform to the location requirements above must be removed as a condition of approval of any development activity listed in, in this section. So that's where it is determined that a site is redeveloping and the site will access or have parking from the alley, and they have an existing driveway curb cut, they need to restore that back to sidewalk or, or what was their previous. Okay, the next one is related to fences. Got some feedback that it was a little bit confusing when a fence permit was required. That was a new requirement as of 2019. And so we're just adding some language right up front that says permit required in, in this section. A fence permit must be obtained prior to construction of any new or replacement fence or wall. So we hope that'll, folks will see that and they'll, they'll know that they need a permit. And then another change is to the illustration that is in the code, just adding some further clarifying labels and illustrations to help more clearly folks at the counter that, that are trying to understand where they can put their fence. This is, this is the figure we pull out and show them. So got some feedback from the experts that it could be improved, and so we tried to do that by making some changes. Okay, so the final one here is related to non-commercial, non-commercial speech signs. And so I mentioned last time, we had gotten some feedback, and staff also noticed that the regulations as written were a little bit hard to decipher with regard to non-commercial speech signs, which include political, social, religious, or other philosophical messages. So that's always kind of a gray area you're stepping into when you try to regulate those types of, those types of signs. And so what I've done is tried to, and there was also some confusion about the difference between a permanent non-commercial speech sign and a temporary non-commercial speech sign, and which regulations applied in which situations. And so for this one, we've tried to kind of reorganize the standards. I haven't really changed the substantive standards, other than just reorganizing and getting, we eliminated the previous table that talked about non-commercial temporary signs and sort of incorporated these regulations into the rest of the, the body of the, of the regulations down here. Whoops, whoa. So we hope this will help make things more clear. What, also what we did was, whoops, there was one typo in 1967-06-0 that we'd like to, to fix. And, let's see what I think. We also added in a table right at the front talking about location requirements. So what types of signs are allowed to be placed on private property versus within the public right-of-way? Because that was something that was coming up quite frequently. And so this table is just saying, and I have this slide here, types, one, all the types of temporary signs can be placed on private property. Within the public right-of-way, only type 1 and type 4, which are like the small yard signs and the A-board signs, under specific conditions can be placed in the public right-of-way. And that's for both commercial and, and non-commercial. So we feel like that'll, that'll kind of help clarify things. And then, there's the, the examples of what each type 1, type 2, type 3, type 4, type 5 signs are. And I guess that's, that's it. I don't know, I, I'm happy to get more into detail on this. I'm not sure how much you all have reviewed on these revisions to the temporary sign regulations, but if you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer those. And otherwise, I don't have any more. And so if there are any public comments?
Any questions from commissioners? Dr. Martin?
I, I just have a quick question on the fences. Permit is required for fences and walls, but not hedges?
Correct. There we go. Yes.
Okay.
And I had a question about the, going back to the alley access during development. Maybe I missed something. What triggers the requirement to move access from the road to the alleyway?
Yeah, so there, so anything listed in 1953-03-0B, which I don't have right here, but it is the list of different actions that require public street improvements. So creation of a new dwelling unit, creation of a new commercial structure, or anything that's adding trips or vehicles to the public street system.
Sounds like the more significant developments or, or construction projects?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yes.
I just want, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't sort of retroactively
No.
changing the rules for people who already have existing access
No, you're absolutely correct.
For residents.
Yes, thank you for clarifying.
Any, are either the other commissioners online have questions? I will open this to any public comment about the, I guess I would call them housekeeping issues. Any members of the public wanting to speak? The, the last few items that Ms. Graje covered? Step right up.
Andrea Dow, 1319 8th Street. I just need clarification, if you would. When I look at those, the business about the signs, I, right away, I look at campaign signs. And I wondered if you could just be a little bit more clear or give examples. I know in the past, we've had arguments about the sizes and the placements, and if anything gets people riled up, it's a misplaced campaign sign. Could you just give some examples of how that's being addressed?
Sure. So the way that campaign signs would be addressed in this section, so we'll just go through and we'll talk about temporary sign standards. So first of all, location, so a non-commercial speech sign is what we really have to refer to them as because we can't, according to a Supreme Court case, we have to be really careful about making regulations based on the content of a sign. So we're not really able to say, okay, a political sign has to meet these requirements and a religious sign has to meet these requirements. They're all kind of grouped together under non-commercial temporary signs, or non-commercial signs. So the way that the code regulates those are that you can have any type of sign on private property. In the public right-of-way, you could only have a type 1, which is the yard sign. Type 1 and type 4. So the yard signs are these very small, very small signs. So you could have type 1 sign in the right-of-way or on private property, or a type 4. And then we get into, this is all commercial, so these are all the standards that relate to commercial temporary signs, and none of these are going to relate to the non-commercial, which would include the political signs. So for example, type 1 temporary signs, you can have them in any zone, they could be in the public right-of-way. On private property, there is no limit to the maximum amount. In the public right-of-way, there would be no limit, except that multiple signs for single non-commercial purpose must be separated from each other by at least 25 linear feet as measured from the center line of the right-of-way. So there, you're going to put them in the public right-of-way, they, you would need to have the adjacent property owner's permission and also have them spaced the 25 feet. The size requirements, again, for private property, for a type 1 sign would be, or, yeah, type 1 sign we're still in, would be 12 square feet is the maximum size, eight feet above grade. And within the public right-of-way, four square feet, three feet above grade. And then we move down to the duration. So how long can you display non-commercial temporary signs? For private property, it's 180 days per year and within the public right-of-way. 180 days per, per calendar year. So that's, that's an example of just the, the small little temporary campaign signs that you would see. And then any other type of sign that you could have, like a commercial, a commercial purpose sign, like a construction sign, that would be like a type, sorry, I'm scrolling through these like a crazy person. So you could have, commercial and industrial real estate signs have certain standards, commercial temporary signs in residential zones. Basically, the, the code is not able to allow a commercial sign and not allow a non-commercial temporary sign to be the same size or, or meet the same requirements. We can't put further restrictions on non-commercial temporary signs than, than commercial signs. Does that help? Thank you. It's a very confusing topic.
All right.
Thank you.
Are you done? I see a hand in the back. Do we have somebody wanting to speak? Step up to the mic, please. Step up to the mic, please.
I apologize for coming in late, and I may be asking a redundant question, but I have a question about political signs and their removal. And is there a time limit for those removal of signs once a campaign and the election is over with? And what happens with those signs? And the reason why I'm asking is because I personally picked up 35 political signs a month after the election was over, and another 15 that had been removed from the site but dumped in the forest lands. And that raises a concern for me. So I hope there's a, a situation where we can address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have an answer for that question? Is there, I don't recall a specific policy, but I'm probably just ignorant at this point.
Yeah, you know, the current code, I don't believe, addresses the time within which non-commercial temporary signs need to be picked up after an election. I think it's, it's really difficult because at that point, you're starting to call out political signs because of their content, as opposed to other types of non-commercial signs. And so, the current code does not, does not address that issue, and the proposed changes would also not address that issue beyond the allowance for a maximum of 180 days total for a temporary sign to be displayed.
Mr. Meesmer, you look like you have something to add.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah. Non-commercial signs are hornet's nest. We cannot refer to political signs as political signs anymore. So we have to look at all non-commercial signs the exact same way. And with the 180-day maximum display period, I think that helps us administer the non-commercial sign section. In our, our current code, we don't have anything in there. And I can tell you that November, December was, October was a real pain in our side, so to speak. It was very difficult dealing with those non-commercial signs, and that's why staff has sat down and put together this new proposal.
Another quick question. I have a neighbor that has a flag the size of a normal American flag, but it's a political flag. Is that a sign?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Meesmer?
That is not a sign, that's a flag, as there are so many others around. Might also add, the removal of non-commercial signs or commercial signs from private or right-of-ways can be subject to police action.
Thank you. Mr. Chretzky?
Since we're limited by, by 180 days, can we have an ordinance that starts 180 days or 165 or 170 days before an election and ends soon after the election? It meets the 180-day requirement, but it stops it soon after the election.
Well, again, it's very difficult to monitor these and that our staffing levels are somewhat slow, are low. When the sign goes up, we try to notice when these signs are going up. And then, we try to record the date that they go up, and then 180 days after that, they have to be removed. Most folks are really good about it. You know, they put them up, they take them down. You know, I oftentimes, our, our staff or myself will contact some of the folks that put those signs up and let them know that they do have a time range to remove them.
Okay, any other questions from Commissioners? And last call for any comments from the public. We will, as I said, continue this hearing, so it'll be available for comment at our next meeting, after we've had a chance to review the, any new written comments that are received. And, let me check with the Commission. Do we want to really mainly focus on changes that are made between now and then when it comes to the presentation? Unless somebody has any specific questions, we can go back and revisit, but I think we won't force you to go through the entire presentation, but merely highlight the edits that have occurred between now and then, and perhaps why they've, why they were made. Everybody okay with that?
That sounds great. Thank you.
With that, we will end the session tonight and reconvene next week. Thank you, everybody.